We are right at seven o'clock. I will call tonight's city council meeting to order. And could we have a roll call? We'll hold. We'll just have Julian note roll for the record. And with that, I would invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) All right, council, we have an agenda before you this evening.
I would propose an amendment to the agenda. I would like to add a quick item under 7H under our action agenda. And that would be to add a city administrator search update and related action to the agenda, again, under 7H. And with that, I would move that council approve the amended agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second from council member Erickson. All of those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. And our motion carries. Our next item this evening is open forum. Open forum is any interested parties' opportunity to address council on any topic of your choosing. I will say that tonight, we do have a planned public hearing related to the Fourth Street Southwest zoning map amendment. If you are here to speak on that topic, you're always welcome to speak during open forum. You can also wait until the public hearing. That will be the only topic we talk about at the public hearing, so if you have a broader topic in mind, now is a good opportunity. Lyle and Karen Anderson, if you could approach the podium. If you could just start with your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lyle Anderson, and my wife Karen Anderson. We live at 21850 Harrow Avenue, which is right on the Castlewood Golf Course. And I'm here to talk a bit about the porta potty situation that's come before you constantly before. First of all, I want to thank the council, the mayor, for allowing me to approach you. The situation, we've lived for 35 years, and we're both golfers, and so we've golfed there a number of times. May I ask a question for the people, for the audience and the council members? Are there some golfers here? Well, thank you. Oh, I'm gonna have to explain some things then, which I'm glad to do. The situation apparently is the porta potty situation. And we've lived there, like I mentioned before, all these years. And as far as we can recall, that porta potty where it was at has stood there for a number of years. And it sits between, about halfway between the second green and the seventh green. And of course, we live on the seventh green. And our property adjoins the golf course property. And I would say that we live approximately 25, our property, 25 feet from the green of the seventh green. And our house sits another 20 feet approximately off the property line. But we face the west, excuse me, the house faces east. We have a sunroom that faces west on our house. And so, we have a pretty clear view of that golf course. And I will start by saying that we're unhappy with what's being planned for the removal of the porta potty. Right before, that porta potty sat right between the second green and the seventh green and was out of the way. I have yet to hear or see anybody get hit by a flying ball there. Not saying it hasn't, but it may have, but not to my knowledge. Anyway, the seventh green lies uphill, just a slight uphill, the whole fairway. And right before the green, there is a sand trap, a large sand trap. And naturally, a lot of times, people land in the sand trap. And the problem we see is that not so much the sand trap, but the people who are hitting onto the seventh green, and they're hitting uphill, they can't see the green itself. They can know where it's about, but they can't see the green itself. And so, until they get further closer to the green. But what happens is that people who, long ball hitters, will hit from the bottom of that knoll, and that probably is a good, oh, I'm guessing, a couple of blocks probably to the green. And we've seen many a time where they have to hit over the green, the sand trap, onto the green. And many people will fly over the green, or fly over the green, and go 25, 30 feet beyond it even, many times. The problem we have here with this porta potty situation is that porta potty who is to be located about 30 feet beyond the, to the east of that green. And what we're facing here is that people from the second green and the seventh green use that porta potty. And it was lying right between the two greens. And so, it really is, there's some trees around nearby that give us some protection. Now, what we have is a big oak tree right behind the seventh green. That, as I understand, is scheduled to come down. It's got a yellow market around it to be taken down. I don't know when it'll be, probably most likely, whether it were the winter or whatever. Anyway, what happens and what's gonna happen is that, you know, not everybody has a golf cart, if you remember. There's a number of people who walk the green, the course, just for exercise and, of course, play golf. And so, they don't have the ability, a lot of them, to go from that second green, now with the new porta potty location, and go beyond, behind that seventh green. And remember, that porta potty now is only about 30, 35 feet beyond, behind, to the east of that green. Now, I don't say that there are people who are gonna hit that porta potty, but they come darn close to it, I can tell you that. We've seen that many times, how it'll hit that far over. And it's hazardous because of the fact that the people from the second green now will have to walk behind the second green and overpass to the seventh green and to the porta potty. So, they're gonna be in line, that situation, they're gonna be right in line with the people who hit that ball up into that fairway, onto that green. And it's hazardous, it's gonna be hazardous, with people walking behind it to go to the porta potty. And it's, I'm kinda concerned about that. And I confronted most of my neighbors about this, and there's five of us who face that fairway on the golf course. So, they see that porta potty, they could see the one before, but it was in the trees. Now, it's gonna be wide open, there's nothing, I understand that might be some bushes, whatever, added to that, around it once they get finished. I don't know that, I've only heard that. My concern is that people, from where we have that sunroom, we can see that porta potty. And we're not too anxious to see that, and, I mean, from our view. And I'm kinda concerned is that that porta potty where it's located now will certainly probably decrease the value of our home over time. I'm sure that it will, 'cause nobody wanna have a porta potty that close to their house like we do. So, we're concerned about that. And I'm not sure, you know, where we, the council stands on this, but I'd like you to take consideration of maybe going back and putting that porta potty in between the second green and the seventh green, right in the middle between where it was before. Just move it back. They might have to, in the move, they got damaged, that there was shelter around it, it wouldn't shelter around that porta potty. And I noticed here just the other day, 'cause I took a walk over there, and the shelter around has been damaged, and that, and sure, it's because of how they moved the, moving the porta potty out of there to begin with. So, I'd like to have to take this consideration and make the council aware of what's going on there. And we hope you will consider the fact that moving that porta potty back to where it was. I'd appreciate that. My neighbors would appreciate that as well. Thank you for allowing me to address you this evening.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Next on open forum this evening, Neil Will.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The reason I'm here is, last Thursday...
Could you start with your name and address for the record?
Neil Will, 20560 Georgia Avenue North, Forest Lake. The reason I'm here is, last Thursday the 7th, around 3:00, we had a large police presence that came into the neighborhood, both local and sheriff. And as we were watching, watching this from our window right across the street, it was the house next to the one across, so we couldn't really see what was going on there. But a police officer walked across our neighbor's yard with a assault rifle and crouched down by their garbage cans and was watching that house. So, the reason, what I, the problem that I have is that nobody went to the houses to say, "Stay in your house." There was two children in that house, and I called them and said, "Go in the basement. I don't know what's going on." There were at least 10 to 15, at least 10 police cars that were in that area. There were people coming home from work, driving right by. There was people walking their dog. That person did stop and get behind a police officer. There was a UPS truck that came and delivered a package to the house across the street with the police officer right there with a rifle. And I'm just, was just aghast by this thing. Why aren't they stopping people or just waiting to see what's going on? Maybe they end up being nothing, but you, just to have that, people walking right by with some officer with a weapon drawn, just did not seem right to me.
Understood.
So...
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we're open forum, Kelly and Sarah, is it Hofer? Hofer? Help me with your last name.
What's that?
Help me with your last name.
It's Hofer.
Hofer, thank you.
So, I'm Kelly Hofer. This is my wife, Sarah Hofer, 56 Fourth Street Southwest.
Thank you.
And we're here for the rezoning map, I guess.
Excellent.
I guess that's all I had.
Thank you. You're welcome. If you have comments you'd like to address council now, you're welcome to now. Otherwise, if you want to, during that public hearing, we're happy to hear from you then.
Yeah, something comes up, we'll just...
Excellent, very good. Thank you. Glad you're here. And next, we're open forum, Jeff Klein. Good evening.
I mostly came just to say thanks to Sam and Mara for, oh, Jeff Klein, 22710 Ideal Avenue North. Just to thank Sam and Mara, you guys came along at a time the city was kinda going wayward back in 2016, so I appreciate everything you've done. And if I didn't get here before your term ended, I wanted to make sure you guys knew that.
Thank you.
And you too, congratulations, and I hope you can keep everything going on. So, I appreciate that, Blake and Anna. And Leaf, you're only halfway through, so in a couple of years, I'll have some comments for you. But as I was coming up here, I kinda looked at the agenda, and I know you guys have gone around on this, the Belts Park parking agreement. I'm not gonna pretend to know any more than anyone here, so I won't argue or, I'm with the agreement itself. I was just curious. I came across, well, 5,500 a year, which is ironically exactly a, one year worth of city council stipend, so that was ironic. But if you extrapolate that out, that'd be like 16.5 for three years, so I don't know how much, like, Class 5 gravel you can get for that and make some sort of temporary parking lot, just a thought. Beyond that, I just wanted to mention line 21 of the agreement. It kinda caught my eye because it's the holding over clause. You know, it's blah, blah, blah legally is where if the city were to continue to occupy said parking lot, you'd be charged 150% of the lease agreement, which would then be, what, 77.50? But I'm not sure what that even means, because you're not actually occupying. It's like, say, I were to go there and park and walk down to the park, I'm not part of the city. So, I just, that line just concerned me that if all of a sudden, when you don't have the agreement, whether it's one year, three years, or five years down the road, and people out of habit just continually park there anyway, I don't want you guys liable for 150% of a cost that you guys would have nothing to do with. And then, there's the whole issue of, I'm sure you'd be legal fees, and they'd be calling Chief Peterson to have my car towed, and it would just kinda... So, once you enter the agreement, you invoke the line 21 clause, so just, I'm gonna make sure everyone is aware of that, and I'm sure you are. So, whether you work the agreement out and give them five and a half grand a year, that's entirely up to you guys, so, thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of open forum for planned comments. Is there anybody else that would like to speak this evening that's here, maybe didn't sign up? All right, not seeing anyone come forward. Julian, anybody online?
No attendees raising their hand.
Okay. Very good. We will close open forum and bring agenda back to council. Council, for your consideration this evening is our consent agenda. We have items 6A through 6I on the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 6A through 6I.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. And a consent agenda is approved. Moving on to our regular agenda, our first item is item 7A, which is consideration of 56 Fourth Street Southwest, the zoning map amendment. And Abby, I believe you're walking us through this.
I am.
As I mentioned previously, there is a public hearing scheduled for this. We will hear presentation from staff. We will have a first round of questions or comments that council may have, just any clarifications that are needed. We'll then open up the public hearing, hear any feedback that public may have, and then close, bring back to council. Abby, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Bayne, members of the council. The Hoofers own the property at 56 Fourth Street Southwest, so shown up there on the, on the screen. And they're seeking to purchase some land from Forest Lake Christian Church at 420 Broadway Street West. So, tonight, you actually have two actions in front of you. One of them is a lot line adjustment, so essentially moving the Hoofers' north property line just to the north side of the garage access in this location. One thing that has triggered then the second action is the property that the church is on is zoned B1, the Broadway Business District, whereas the Hoofers own a mixed residential single-family district, very separate zoning districts. So, changing that line, we do actually need to rezone this portion, that south 41 feet of that property that the church owns. So, tonight, in front of you is two actions. One is consideration of the lot line adjustment, that would then combine the lot that the church sells to the Hoofers. And the second would be the zoning map amendment. Staff has reviewed this matter, the planning commission provided comment at their last meeting. Both bodies are recommending approval of both actions. So, tonight, for your consideration are two motions. One would be the resolution 11122402, which would be that lot adjustment in combination. And then, a second motion of, to approve ordinance number 739, approve, 743, excuse me, 743, approving zoning map amendment for 56 Fourth Street Southwest, new addition. As Mr. Hofer had indicated, they're here. If you have any questions for them, do you have any questions for me at the moment?
Counsel, any questions for Abby? Seeing some head shake, anything? All right, not having any immediate questions of, for Abby from council, let's open up the public hearing. And again, if you're here and would like to speak, you're welcome to do so. Nobody's obligated to speak. Applicants, your information's been very clear, so we're happy to hear any information you have, but you don't need to come and, come and make a plea if you, if you don't wish to. With that, let's open up public hearing. And is there anybody that would like to speak on this topic? Will the public hearing open for just a little bit here? And Julian, I'll ask if there's anyone online that would like to speak in the public hearing?
No, mayor.
All right, not seeing anybody come forward, we're gonna close the public hearing and bring conversation back to council. Counsel, any discussion items, or also happy to, happy to entertain a motion if anyone's ready?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 11122402. This resolution approves a proposed lot line adjustment in combination agreement for the property located at 56 Fourth Street Southwest.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. And motion carries. Next item, looks like we're ready.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 743, is that correct?
Correct.
743. This ordinance amends the city of Forest Lake official zoning map, rezoning the 45, 41-foot wide piece of property to be transferred from the property located from 420 Broadway Avenue West to the property located at 56 Fourth.
Very good, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all of those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. And motion carries. All right. We are going to move on to our next item, which is consideration of ordinance 742, the nuisance tree ordinance. And Dave, I believe you are walking us through this.
Yep. Good evening, mayor and council. At our last workshop, we worked through this ordinance quite heavily, basically looking for any of your other additional comments or feedback, and really looking for approval of this ordinance and resolution to approve this.
Thank you, Dave. And previous additional context for those that might be watching, this was covered fairly extensively in a previous council meeting, so this is kind of, this is council's second time through, through this particular topic. Counsel, any questions or additional points of clarification on this item? And are we looking for two separate actions tonight? Is one for approve the ordinance, and is the second for the resolution for summary publication?
That's correct.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Anyone ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 742, Enacting the Shade Tree Pest Control ordinance.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. Motion carries. Next item, resolution?
Yeah, motion to, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 11122404, the summary publication.
I'll second. Motion and a second, all those, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. Motion carries. All right, moving through item 7C, the shade tree policy, also covered in a previous council workshop, but Dave, updates for us?
Yep, this is, gonna be the city's tree maintenance policy. The biggest, biggest part of this is that the city is taking responsibility for all right-of-way trees. That's the biggest part of this policy, to say that we will maintain, maintain right-of-way trees going forward. So, just kinda goes in hand, hand in hand with the previous ordinance of the nuisance that we wanna make sure that we are taking responsibility for our right-of-way trees.
Very good. Thank you, Dave. I'd just like to also express some appreciation for the different, we've heard from different neighborhood members on different neighborhoods on this particular topic, and kind of encouraging us to kind of formalize what our policy should be on this topic. And so, this has prompted us to do so. I think we are a little overdue on this topic, but happy to see that we are at this point to approve. Counsel, any other comments or questions on, on the policy? Anyone ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the tree maintenance policy.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All of those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. And motion carries. All right, next item, consideration of property maintenance at the airport residential structure. Dave, this one is also yours.
Mayor and council, it's brought up, been brought up a few meetings ago about maintenance at the existing structure at the airport, as you can see on the screen. The house that's been there, the old, the old building that was at the north side of the airport. We met with council member Erickson, Julian and I have met out there and kinda came up with ideas of how to do some maintenance out there. We're just looking for council approval or majority approval of what we wanna do out there for maintenance. This would be just strictly cutting down the overgrowth around the building and then adding that to mowing, mowing around that area twice a year, basically when we ditch mow, spring and fall. It doesn't, doesn't touch the other buildings or anything off-site. I think that's probably an airport commission discussion at some point of full site, but just something along 97 to clean that up. So, like I said, staff, staff have met with council member, and we just wanna make sure that everybody's on the same page, and that's, that's what we wanna do out here for some
Dave, is that pile of lights that were brought up there years ago still there?
Yeah, so that pile of lights, if you can see my cursor, that's, that's kinda right here.
Yeah.
Where's your cursor?
You see that on the screen?
Oh.
So, there's, those are the old, the lights that were bought for Fenway, they never got put up. So, there's this, there's the three old buildings that are still standing, and then, and then the house. So, this house is the one that's closest to 97. Was just discussed that we should clean that up to make it look a little neater as traffic drives by. And I think there's more abatement of, as far as asbestos and other cleanup for those other, those other properties that needs to probably be talked about a little bit more before we make a decision on that. But this is something that public works staff can probably just cut down and start maintaining going forward.
The lights that are on the property, are they visible from anything else?
They're...
Besides the air?
They're in the air, they're, they're growing into the ground, so I mean, it's...
Yeah, that's the problem, they've been there so long, and they're completely worthless. I don't think anybody ever gonna be able to use them.
Nope.
And we ended up with them over at the airport.
Al Hofer from Florida did meet with somebody to have them take a look at that last, last spring, and they said it's basically, it would cost more money to try to rehab them and get them working versus going to LED now. So, they, they really have no value. It's just trying to figure out who's actually responsible for them, they're not technically the city's, and we just let them store them there for the time being. So, that's probably a discussion for a different day. This is more just about that cleaning up around, around the house right now.
Yeah, the house and the buildings, those lights, I mean, those are all up significantly higher than the road. And so, we, when we walked the property and identified these areas outlined in red, it's really what you can see as you're going by on the road. But yeah, Dave is right, we need to have a broader discussion another time about what to do with, you know, these other buildings that are, are being used.
Yeah. Seems to be a common sense, something we can do now. And then also, I think, just the recognition that long-term, we need a better plan for what we should do with the structures, but that's a conversation for a different day and a different budget.
Yeah, it'd be something public works, at least the removals could do over the winter, and then that would be something we'd add to mowing next year. Once the compost site shuts down, we should have time, over the winter, just add it to our, our removal list and, and clean that up, and then add that to the mowing in the
Sounds like a good approach. I would, any other discussion on this topic? I would move that council approve and that, that staff proceed with the property maintenance as, as presented by staff. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We'll take a second from council member Valento. We have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? We'll take a second from council member Valento. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? And motion carries. Our next topic, screening at Castlewood. And Dave, I believe you're also covering for this one?
Jeez, keep going.
The Dave Show.
I can bring up some pictures. We've brought this up in a previous discussion meeting, so as you can see, if you can see on, on your screen, the yellow dot is, is where the existing portable enclosure is. Staff moved it to the red location mainly because it's at the, where the golf cart paths are and we've got multiple complaints every year of that. This enclosure can't get serviced during the spring and fall when it, when it's, the moisture's out there. So, they can't drive, they don't wanna drive out on the grass, they don't wanna drive on the fairway and the green. So, in talking with the contractor for some golf, they recommended relocating to where that second and seventh green comes in. We also relocated the one on the south side. That's not pictured on here, but that also got moved off of a golf cart path. So, the vendor can service that year-round. That was the main reason why, why we relocated. City ordinance has it screened three ways, that you can't screen the, you can't, you screen from the road and adjacent property owners. So, Public Works basically faced it due west, as you can see on, on this picture. Facing basically right back down, down the seventh green. As you can see here, it's right in between those, the golf cart paths, just that's for the service part and just for traffic. It's the future plans, you can see the concrete on there too is offset. That's where gonna be a recycling and garbage can to have trash, so people can throw their, their trash as they go, go through the course as well. But that's, that's looking to the north, to the residents to the north. This one's looking south. This is further down the green, looking back, back at where we put the new enclosure. And this is where that existing enclosure is right now. This is the reason why we're replacing that enclosure. So, I think regardless of where we put it, it's, I think we can all agree it needs to be repaired. So, working with, with Forsen, that's why we, we pick these spots is to try to get them in a place to cut down on the complaints of maintenance year-round and make it, make it usable, just in a better spot. I'm working with Forsen that these are where these spots where, you know, the majority of traffic goes by with their carts and, and people walking, so. The main, the main complaint is that it's not screened due west. This would be a deviation off our code where we screen it from the street and on both adjacent sides. It'd just be something that we would need council action on to tell us, we need to screen that on all four sides.
Dave, can you go back to the green with the red and blue dot?
Yep.
So, the fairway is to the west, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, and right now, the, the door opening is facing down the fairway?
The door is facing down the, the, the blue line going to that property is the person that had, the person that had said that it was facing directly at them. It's not actually facing directly at them, it's facing due west. It's not
Kind of, almost facing directly at that, at that sand trap?
Correct.
Yep. Which way, which way was the previous structure facing?
Previous structure is facing pretty much due north.
Due north?
Yep.
So, for those properties closest to the new enclosure, it would be an improvement over what's been?
Correct.
Where's the, where's the other one at? Just out of reference. I mean, I can see it from the road, the old
So, the existing is right here, right up in Highway 97?
That faces east, correct?
Correct, and then that has been moved up over here.
Well away from any residents?
Yep, just so it can be access off this golf cart path to get there, 'cause there's no path here and that's where they run in the trouble in the spring and the fall to, to make it out there. So, it's been repositioned here.
Thank you.
And with the addition of the clubhouse that has full restrooms now, that they don't need them. That one was, the one right here was there because there was no clubhouse, there was a bathroom. So, it's, it kinda situated in between two other holes that would kinda be break points of people walking through.
Okay, thank you.
So, it wasn't a guess of where we're putting it, it was number one for maintenance, number two, just to kinda put them in better spots of where they should be located for, for playing.
Council, other questions or thoughts on this particular topic?
I could go either way on this one. I, if it is perceived to be, if not having four sides in a particular location needs an exception and that is something that we have four sides, I can, I can see a strong argument for that. I wouldn't advocate that we do it on all of them. I think it's on an exception basis. But also, there is a strong argument that what is, what is planned is significantly improved from what has been. So, I could go either way.
Dave, what would you do for screening on that fourth side? What would you recommend?
If we were to put a four screen, we'd have to measure out far enough that they could get a portable restroom out in the spring and fall and, and probably put up a wall, a fourth wall. So, it'd be out probably, well, the exact dimensions of the portable bathroom, but probably three, four feet out and then another additional wall.
So, it'd be kind of essentially a standalone wall?
Correct.
Yeah.
You know, given the placement of it on the, directly behind that green, that may not be a bad idea just from a safety standpoint for that particular one?
I think it's, it's worth it on this property. Again, I think there's also, it's a case-by-case basis. We don't necessarily need to, I think there's a lot of places where three is more than sufficient. So, to do an exception on this one, I can certainly wrap my head around. And I see some heads nodding.
Yeah, I think it's, it is kinda the neighborly thing to do there. There's that concern, you know, for some little bit additional money to screen it on all four would probably make an easy decision for me.
Anyone ready for a motion? We should probably do a motion for some official action.
Make a motion that we have Public Works screen that, put up a fourth side on that porta potty on the seventh green of Castlewood.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? And motion carries. Our next item this evening is consideration of the St. Peter's Church parking lot agreement. Jolene?
Thank you, Mayor. Following the October 28th meeting when council directed staff to revisit conversations with the church, I and Dave actually went and met with Father Bodine and his business administrator, Christine Erickson, to discuss the, the status of the agreement that had been presented to the city last summer and kinda just dropped off the radar. They were appreciative to reengage conversation with us and to get something in place. So, tonight before you is the revised agreement with a couple considerations for council. This agreement would be in effect from December 1 of this year to November 30 of next year. The church has asked that the agreement have some renewal terms included so that if things are working well and it seems to be a benefit to both parties, the, the agreement can automatically renew. They've also asked for some termination language during that renewal period to be included. That updated agreement was emailed out to you today. It is included in the packet that's online as well. One other portion of the agreement that I'd like to bring to your attention is paragraph 10, which references snow removal. The church is asking that the city assist in removing snow from the sidewalk south of Belts Park to the Scandia Cemetery along South Shore Drive. This is outside of the city's snow and ice removal policy. So, in order for council to approve that, this agreement does include a waiver of adherence to that policy. Should council not wish for that snow removal to be included, we can strike that from the policy and that's the one, or from the, the agreement and that's the one we would have Mayor Bane sign. Otherwise, this is a one-year, this is a one-year contract with the ability to renew for up to three years. And I'm happy to answer any questions and I know Amanda worked really hard on this as well, so she is happy to answer questions as well.
Thank you. Council, questions we might have on this topic?
Yeah, I mean, that holding over paragraph is an interesting one to include. How does that work out?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. So, that's a pretty standard holdover language. This agreement was one that the church wanted to use. And so, at that point, at this point, this kind of recent, most recent, excuse me, iteration was to remove as little as needed to be removed because the, our understanding was that the church had kind of already approved what they wanted and changed, much changes, you know, or too many changes probably were going to require them to reanalyze it. That said, there were some things around like not allowing certain religious expression that we removed because as a city, we simply cannot agree to that. The government, it's a deep component. Also, generally speaking, there, as the individual mentioned during the public comment, this is a weird situation because we're not exactly, you know, we're not living on the property or renting it for a business. So, from an enforceability perspective, I'm not quite sure how they would be able to enforce that provision. But I do think that the reality is, if this agreement is a short-term agreement and in the future, there's going to be something else, we'll have to figure out what that something else is. And when I say that, I mean what the other parking is going to be. And then likely what would need to happen is some sort of a sign at the church parking lot that says, this is not park parking, right? This is private property parking. So, that would be something that I would advise the city to, to put in place if slash when this agreement is no longer in play. Does that answer your question?
Should, okay, should that be the case? It's, it seems there's a, there's an automatic renewal, right? So, it feels like the best answer is until we have another answer, until we have another solution, we would allow for that automatic renewal. We stay within the agreement, we stay within the terms, the pricing that the contract allows. So, it seems like that holding over is really only triggered if we choose to terminate. Is that right?
Yes, or exactly, once it expires and they told us to get off, but we refuse to get off.
Right.
Those would be the two triggers.
So, us doing some level of signage would essentially be our notification to the public that, hey, this is no longer considered?
That would be my recommendation.
Interesting. I'm, I'm comfortable with that holding over language in there. Again, it's
Yeah, with that explanation.
Our occupation is, the premise is just the parking lot, but where, I'm interested in council feedback on the plowing as proposed? Are we comfort level with the plowing language as proposed?
I am, largely because to my understanding, we're not actually needing to haul equipment there to accomplish that. It's, it'll be done in the normal course of action on sidewalks adjoining it that are being cleared. And so, there's not any extra expense, if you will, to transport equipment there to accommodate that, correct?
Correct, yeah. It's just not our, following our policy of property owners are maintaining their property, so that would be the offshoot of it.
So, if I understand, they maintain plowing of the parking lot that we're leasing and they do that under their schedule, based on what fits with their schedule. Are we also able to plow? So, then if we are going to plow the sidewalk, are we able to do that within our schedule? Where equipment would be, this doesn't require us to change our scheduling at all, does it?
Yeah, the second paragraph says it, you know, with the city's snow removal policy.
Within our, so, current policy?
Yeah, so, we may need to add we may need to add that in that we're waiving our policy, but also following our policy.
From a timeline perspective?
Yeah, because we're, we're gonna waive it that property owners are responsible to do it, but we're also say that we're only, we're gonna follow our policy that we do sidewalks and trails with a two-inch trigger and we don't do it underneath that and we don't salt it and we don't. So, we're, yeah, we're following our policy, but we're not gonna follow our policy.
Yeah.
I can appreciate as a church and a school, that might not meet their requirements. And so, I just, I'm comfortable with us plowing in the, the sequence that we would plow it for our purposes. But I, I'm hesitant, that may not always meet their requirements and I, meet their timing and I think they just, I just want them to be aware of that.
Yep, so if we get an inch of snow on a Saturday night, we will not be plowing it Sunday morning?
That is right. That's maybe, and that, it's a church, that will happen.
Yep.
So, okay. And it, well, and also to that point, snowfall happens. You have a sequence on, on snow removal, that sequence may not mean that we're moving equipment over to get everything plowed prior to church. I guess, I just think there's that component as well that wanna make sure that the expectations are correct.
So, our policy for removal of sidewalks is within 48 hours of a snowfall. We typically get that done with, same as a snowplow, but so, say if it snows on Saturday night, we get six inches of snow. Our policy says we don't have to have it removed till Monday morning.
Dave, how much extra time do you think it's gonna be on, on that sidewalk alone? Say you get four inches of snow?
Well, to Councilman Erickson's point, we, we plow down South Shore and then we pick back up after the cemetery. So, we're, we're driving past it, we're just following our policy that we don't
Okay.
Just like any other sidewalk or property owner, we, we skip over that if it's, if it's not ours, so.
Time-wise, you'll be okay then?
Do you, do you feel that the church is clear? I just feel like once we're obligated to do the service, I'm concerned we're obligated to meet a timeline of that we are rushing resources to meet 8:00 AM math on Sunday and that may not happen.
And that's a discussion too, even, I think our workshop conversation next week is about other snow removals is, you know, we have a policy and if we need to change that policy, then that's a whole nother policy change. So, it's gonna be difficult if we pick certain spots that are different, different depths or different times or different responsibilities and it's gonna affect staffing and, and all that. So, I mean, that's the tough part is we have a, what we do is what we do with removing snow off of streets and sidewalks and all that. And if we change that for certain spots, it's gonna be difficult to, to change that. Or that, whatever that service we wanna do is, is difficult. So, we'd hope that we didn't have to make different zones for different plowing because if we don't come and plow the street, but we're clearing a sidewalk, it's gonna be a hard one to explain to people.
In your conversation with, with the father, did, did you get the sense that they were asking for a different level of service than what's already being delivered on the adjoining sidewalks?
I had sent them the our snow and ice control policy back in June or July when they were first asking about that. I didn't receive a comment back about that was not enough or not I, I didn't receive a comment back about that was not enough or not, or too much or anything. So I, I don't, I didn't get the feeling that that didn't meet what they were, they're getting at. But I think we just, how we spelt out that we're going against their policy, we probably should spell out that, like I said, we're going against their policy, but we are, we still have to follow our policy. Because it's, for that part. Because it's, it'll be, it'd be very difficult to start taking out chunks of areas that we have to maintain differently than remain everything else.
Yeah, absolutely. In my conversations with them, I never got the sense that they were looking for any different, anything different than, I mean, just kind of calling out the fact that we plow a sidewalk, we drive off the sidewalk, drive past and get back on. And they're like, why? So I, I didn't ever get the sense that they're looking for a higher level of service.
And Mayor, if I may, I, I think when we met with them, Father referenced a couple of times that just his concern was that it's a safe route to school according to their safe route to school grant that they've engaged in with the school district. So really, it's more concern for the students on the weekdays who are walking to school. I didn't get a sense from them that they had any concerns related to Sunday Mass. So I don't, they didn't give us the sense that they expected any special treatment. It was truly, to what council member Erickson was referencing, it's the, just hopping over, it seems to make sense that the city would just continue on.
I'm comfortable with us passing this tonight. I think maybe in the handing off to them for approval, it, just having that conversation and clarification again is just important because easier to set that expectation now than in the future if there is some misunderstanding and just kind of an emphasis on what the service level can be. I think we've maybe reached a common sense answer, so.
I do have to say that I'd approve this agreement tonight, but I think $5,500 to use a parking lot for a park next door. There could be worse things located next to a church, I think it's a park. And so I think $5,500 is a little bit steep of an asking price on top of the request for a snow removal. But as long as it's following our policy in the sense of it's the two inches every 48 hours, that makes me feel a little bit more comfortable with the snow removal. But I do think it's a steep price.
I, I think also to Councilmember Valento's point, it is part, part of the, at what point do we do something broader with parking, which was, was part of our previous conversation. And we do need, once that park design is a little further along, we do need to come back to what is an answer here, long-term.
Yeah, I, so as far as the price, I, you know, I understand the little angst there, but you know, this is, we've been utilizing this for 30 or 40 years and not paying anything. So I look at it as a long, going back and paying back for previous years of using this. So I'm, I'm comfortable with it, knowing that hopefully it is likely a short-term situation. We do have some parking in the park when it's fully, fully built out.
Anyone ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the real estate lease with St. Peter's Church as discussed this evening.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, and any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and motion carries. Our next item this evening is item 7G, which is consideration of resolution 11122401, which is accepting donation from the Schwartz family. And I would move that council approves said resolution with gratitude. Is there a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries. Our next item is the new item that was added was item 7H, update on the city administrator search and related actions. And I believe Amanda, you're taking this?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Counsel. So two, two items. One is an update that the Thursday second interview with Mr. Metcalf has been canceled. So that is not going to be moving forward. He, that information has been shared with him and the city wishes him all the best in, you know, finding future employment, but at this point, just didn't feel like it was a good fit based on some additional information that council received over the course of the last week. So just confirming that everybody in council knows that and is under, is good with that. Seeing some head nods, we're good there. Second item is I'm asking council to consider taking action tonight on creating a council committee of two members who would be the council committee for city administration, administrator logistics essentially. And to date, it's been a little bit difficult to schedule different things, to sort of make process decisions because we have to go back to the whole council, get guidance, and then come back. That just makes for sort of a slow process. And so what I'm looking for is if council is comfortable, I, I'm asking council to have two members on the committee because that's less than a quorum, who could work with myself and Carl, the recruiter, to kind of give us guidance and give us direction on the behind-the-scenes things that need to happen. Ultimately, the final decision on a city administrator will absolutely still come before council and the full council has to vote on that. So this is sort of the back, all of, all of the, the making of this decision has to happen. At this point, based on the election, I would suggest for council that it would be Councilmember Roberts and Councilmember Valenta on the committee, just based on, you know, what, what it were going to look like in January. And I stand for questions or clarifications about what I'm asking for. Otherwise, I'd be looking for a motion from council to approve the subcommittee, to empower the, the subcommittee and then appoint those two members to the subcommittee.
Thank you, Amanda. Questions for Amanda? Anything? I, I just want to chime in on kind of the importance in putting together this subcommittee. Last week, we found ourselves in a situation that was moving rather quickly. Councilmember Erickson and myself and our role on the interim admin committee kind of found ourselves in a meeting with, receiving information quickly and needing to make some decisions of what was next. And without that committee being in place and without that authority, I felt it necessary that we call an emergency meeting, which we were able to do and get everyone together and in the same room, and let's have some discussion and make some decisions. That happened one day, that's not something we want to happen routinely. And we are in a situation where things can move quickly and things are rapidly developing. And so just having those two people named, I think is really important. I think having our next mayor in that seat naturally makes sense. Councilmember Valento becomes senior council, council member with seniority. I think that also makes sense, and so I'm happy to support this this evening, but also open to feedback. All right. With that, I would move that council create a subcommittee for the city administrator search of Councilmember Roberts and Councilmember Valento. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries. All right. That brings us to the end of our planned action agenda this evening. We do have a couple of discussion topics on the agenda that we will be talking about. Just a note for anybody that's in the room or listening online, this is more of a workshop format, informal format of council. Anything that we talk about in this section that requires official action will come back before council at a future meeting. And with that, let's talk about the budget survey results and a recap of tonight's open house. And Kevin?
I'll kick, yes, I'll kick it, kick this conversation out. So Mayor and City Council, tonight we held our budget open house upstairs prior to this meeting. And then we also held an online budget survey from October 21st through October 31st to give citizens and residents a chance to respond to some questions and some feedback on the 2025 proposed budget as it currently sits. Included in your packet as a result of the, of the online survey, we had 24 responses in total with all the responses and questions attached to that as well. So really what looking for is just discussion, if there's any feedback or thoughts the city council had on that online survey, as well as any feedback that they received from the budget open house that you would like to discuss. And then additionally, next week at our city council workshop, we will be talking about the 2025 proposed budget and seeking any final direction at that meeting. So if there's anything the city council would like me to prepare in advance for that meeting, I would like that direction tonight as well. So with that, I'll open it up to, up to you for discussion on the 2025 budget.
Thank you, Kevin. Council, I guess, any questions or points of clarification around the materials that were received as part of the survey? Any points of discussion that come out of that? We had very small attendance at the workshop tonight. I do appreciate this, you know, putting that event together takes a fair amount of effort on many people's parts. And so I really appreciate the effort to put that together. I think it's always important that we make information available and we do our best to notify individuals that that meeting is going to take place and this information, and we provide the space and the platform for feedback. People may not always take us up on that, but also how people prioritize their time and who shows up to what is also a point of feedback. And so there are times when an empty room also provides some good feedback. So although we don't have specific points of comment, I think we do have some additional data points tonight that we didn't have before, and so I still think it's a valuable exercise. I also appreciate that the information available will be put online. And we have several meetings in several cycles before we take action on the budget. So there's still some opportunity for engagement if people want to provide it. Maybe let's pivot to what's next. So we, we have this on a workshop next meeting and then the meeting after that. Just a reminder that Kevin will not be at that last meeting in November. Also, traditionally, we have canceled that meeting in November because it's the week of Thanksgiving. Agenda is fairly light right now. I don't think there's anything on that agenda that would say we need to have that meeting. Or am I misspeaking? No, we do need to have that meeting, thank you. But we will not be able to have a broad, broad budget conversation that's kind of Kevin-supported with all of Kevin's graphics and information. And so it'd be good to kind of narrow down what else we might need to talk about for the workshop next week. So with that, what else, what would we like to see for that meeting? I'll just kind of open it up.
So for me, I think just the next subject here on what Fire, or Chief Newman's going to mention might play into some more questions on, on this budget, so.
Do you want to pivot to that and we can come back and talk more about budget? I mean, one feeds the other, to your point. Let's do that, let's put a hold on this topic. Let's pivot over and get an update about the fire.
Okay.
Captain position, and we bring it back.
Okay. Mayor, Council, in February 2024, the Fire Department applied for the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response or Safer Grant to fund a full-time training captain's position. As part of the budgeting process, the Fire Department included this position in the 2025 budget and ultimately, we were not successful in getting the grant. Therefore, we'd like to remove the position of the full-time training captain from the 2025 budget. We plan to use the first half of 2025 to reevaluate the full-time staffing plan, staffing needs, and collaborate with the Joint Fire Board and new state administrator on a succession and staffing plans. We would like then to present staffing proposals to the city council in preparation for the 2026 budget.
Very good. Can you remind us the amount that was in budget? The foresight portion of that position that was in budget?
Mayor, it's about $140,000 is the total all-in budget with that, with the City of Columbus paying roughly 20% of that.
Thank you. So is there a staff recommendation? So if, if budget is coming out, is there a staff, if that request is coming off the table, is there a staff recommendation for those funds around reallocation or reduce the levy, sir?
Mayor and City Council, as you're aware with some of our conversations in closed session, there's some open items out there that you're well aware of that I do not feel is appropriate to discuss as those are currently in negotiation right now, where some of that might end up. So knowing where we're at with those negotiations and what Chief Newman is saying with this position, that's all I would like to say right now.
So should be, any more questions specific for Chief on the fire captain position? So back, back to information to be presented or talked through. Let's maybe just talk about setting up materials for the meeting and kind of what's needed. I think that packet should include the most recent breakout that, that council's made of what was passed for the preliminary levy. It has been a while since this group has walked through that. I think it's helpful to just have that to support the, support the meeting. I don't have any, personally, I don't have any particular asks of, I, I needed the clarification of what the recommendation was for the fire captain. And I don't have anything else of specific breakouts that I particularly need in that discussion, but want to leave room if there's others.
So I, the information that was provided at the workshop or the, the open house is very helpful even for myself to see it on the screen. So I'd ask Kevin to get that out to, to the council. And, you know, if we get that out to the public a little bit, after seeing that, I probably do have a couple of questions that I would reach out to between now and, and Monday and on, on next Monday, some questions on staffing and the different roles of specifically that EDA supervisor or whatever that title is. I noticed some code enforcement and some airport stuff that I don't recall seeing in the past. Maybe I missed that, but I'll probably ask some follow-up questions to staff on that between now and Monday.
Anything else? All right. I think, I think we've, we've covered it. Some more conversations specific to the budget in our workshop. And certainly, Council, as you think about things or questions you might have going into that workshop, the more advanced notice you can give Kevin and everybody to support that, the better. All right, let's move into staff updates.
Alex, Mar, can I say one, one thing back, going back to the fire cap as well? I just want to show appreciation to the fire, the chief to look backing down on that and realizing maybe a bigger picture thing and holding off years has proven. So I appreciate that, that foresight.
Let's do it right, I agree. Should staff updates? Jaleen?
No real updates tonight, just a note for folks who are online. We're having some issues with our video feed and I've been in touch with LA TV and they're having some issues as well. So we'll be uploading a video, a full video of tonight's meeting tomorrow when they have that completed. There is audio online tonight for the live feed, but the video is not working.
Abby?
Just one update, I think I've mentioned to you many times. Hometown holiday is Friday, December 6th. Lakeside Memorial Park starts at 4:30 to 6:30, tree lighting at 6:45. We're still in need of volunteers for the event. You can sign up through the Chambers website. And then we also do, still have sponsorships available. We're about halfway to our goal, so just putting that out there, see if anybody wants to participate. And petting zoo, Santa Claus, vendors, bonfires, so it should be a good community event.
Similar format to last year?
Yep, almost identical, but a little bit of fine tuning some of the features.
Dave?
No update.
Chief Newman?
No updates.
All right, Chief Peterson?
No updates.
Amanda?
Yes, Honorable Counsel, I apologize, I'm the reason you have to have the meeting on the 25th. Just to add some, tomorrow I will be presenting the cannabis zoning ordinance to the planning commission. And then I will be bringing that to you all on the 25th for consideration. I wanted to give you an extra meeting à la December 9th in case there was changes that you wanted and we still had the ability to get those changes in before the end of the year because I'm assuming that we won't be having the second meeting in December.
Yes.
So I apologize, but, but you will be hearing that from me. And then it's possible there will also be a 463 action-related code enforcement matter on the 25th as well. So you're just going to have to hear a lot of my voice next time, sorry.
All right, let's start with All right, let's start with council updates. We'll start with, oh, I'm sorry, no, Ryan, I almost missed you.
Well, you just read my mind, Mayor.
No update?
No updates tonight, any questions?
Excellent. Kevin?
No updates.
I was just ahead of game. All right, let's go back this way. Councilmember Erickson?
No updates.
Councilmember Husnig?
I have no updates tonight.
Councilmember Valento?
So the Cable Commission's holiday party will be at the Forest Lake High School in the studio room at five, on, at 5:00 PM on Friday, December 13th. So everyone is invited. Our meeting will be at four, but just the socialization part, food and drink will be served at five. So feel free to come. And then also, as requested to share, I'll read from the notice and I'll leave it up here if anyone wants to see afterwards. So it says, please join the Forest Lake Police Department and AARP at the Forest Lake Senior Center for a Presentation on Fraud Prevention. It's Thursday, November 21st at 2:00 PM, again, at the senior center. So please attend if you'd like to. And that's it.
Excellent, very good. Councilmember Roberts?
Nothing.
All right. Just a couple of quick updates for me. First of all, congratulations to our newly elected, congratulations to Councilmember Roberts, Councilmember Valento, we elected to her seat. Also, newly elected Councilmember Larson will be seated here in January. So congratulations, just excellent campaign overall and I'm very excited for what is to come for the future. No other updates from me this evening. And that being our last item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I won't.
Second.
Motion, is there a second?
Yep.
Councilmember Erickson for the second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose and motion carries. Thank you all.